Calling to order, the St. Mary's County Board of Education meeting for Thursday, January 29th, 2015. I would like a motion.
I move with the board, enter into executive session for the purpose of personnel, collective bargaining, or legal property acquisition issues and student issues under Maryland Local Government Code Article Section 9-512A 1, 2, 6, and 10.
I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And so we go. Alright, I'm reconvening the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education. Are you ready for that, Mr. Smith?
Yes, I was.
Okay. Okay, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I please have a motion to approve the agenda for this Thursday, January 29th, 2015?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, anyone?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to board reports, we'll start down there with Ms. Lee, are you?
Thank you. I'd like to give an update about our upcoming Drug Summit. At our last planning meeting, the student advisors verbalized and discussed what they would like to see in the keynote speaker and for the activities that will happen over the course of the Drug Summit. As a result of this meeting, and with great thanks to community partners, we have confirmed our keynote speaker from the Upside Down Organization. And we have also decided on two different activities that we will be planning the details of in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Mrs. Crosby?
I guess it's about six years I've been on the board. I went to the, along with many of my colleagues, maybe all of my colleagues, the Martin Luther King Prayer Breakfast at St. Mary's College. We're one of the four organizations that puts it on every year. Very nice people are there. I needed some help, and Kelsey Bush was nice enough to help me get my plate and everything. Steny Hoyer spoke, along with other people. The Spring, the Rhythm Group from Spring Ridge is now making a, they make a lot of appearances, and they're getting better all the time. I know, because I used to play cymbals and then I played the bass drum, and we won't go on anything else. The food was great, always is. I enjoyed the choirs, I enjoyed the song Amazing Grace, I'm not sure why, but I liked that. So it was a very, very nice, inspiring event.
I did several things the past two weeks. I went to a, two more wrestling matches, which I'm really becoming a wrestling fan now, because I kind of understand what's going on. Of course, I sat, I didn't know what to do because it was Great Mills and Lenartown High School. So they kind of all laughed when I came in, because they told me I needed to do part of my hair green and part blue. But I did sit on the Great Mills side with my sporting attire. And then I went to Evergreen Elementary School for the Top Dog Breakfast, which was great, and I sat with the students and parents. Went to Great Mills High School Girls Basketball, that was pretty cool. Ridge Volunteer Fire Department Officer Induction, and saw a lot of my friends there. That was, that was really nice to see how the community supports each other and their volunteer work there. Yesterday, I went to Ridge Elementary School Band String and Choral Concert. There were a lot of very talented students. It was a lot of fun. And I'm going to tell you, that teacher, Mr. Early, he was amazing. He was so talented, he just kept picking up different instruments and then playing along with the students. He played the ukulele, the drums, the guitar, and the trombone. And he, I'm sure there's probably numerous other instruments that he can pick up and play. I also went to the J, I'm not sure if I have the name correct, the J Regulation Advisory Committee, which is, because there's new policies that are being brought up, you know. Actually, the state is sending them down and saying, we need to abide by them. So I went to the advisory committee to sit on, to see how the process worked, to get a better understanding of the thought process of why certain things are put in place. The J Regulations is the disciplinary actions for the students. So it was extremely important, it was very enlightening, and I thank the people that were on that committee for allowing me to sit in on that. And I also wanted to, during, when I went to the wrestling match, which was at Lenartown High School, I met a Mr. Medley, who is the night crew building service worker. He was, he was a very happy person going through, you know, keeping our schools spotless, but, you know, just interacting with people. I came over and he, you know, he was just saying hi to everybody. So, you know, we have some really good people out there that are even the night crew. And I said, big shout out to him, because I'm a night crew worker, I work seven, night to seven in the morning, so I get it. But he does, he does an amazing job there at Lenartown High School. And that's it.
Anything else?
Oh, I did more things, but we'll let you continue.
Okay, I did a couple of things. I did attend the Martin Luther King Breakfast at St. Mary's College, along with the rest of the board. It was fabulous. And hats off to Spring Ridge Middle School and their Rhythm Club, I mean, they were phenomenal. In addition, today, we all trekked to Annapolis to attend the MAAB Legislative Luncheon. So heard about a lot of the initiatives, or House bills, Senate bills that are before the legislature right now, and where the School Board Association is, you know, what their position is on each of those. So very good discussion, you know, I think most all the counties and the city of Baltimore were represented. So, you know, it will be a very interesting legislative year.
Always is.
Mrs. Washington, are you?
Yes, okay. So I went to Martin Luther King Annual Breakfast at St. Mary's College, along with the superintendent and my board members. I also attended Becca Scholarship Fair, which was held at the Forest Center. This was a wonderful opportunity for our students to seek additional financial aid. The price of college is very expensive. There were many civic groups there, many clubs and organizations, and it was a wonderful turnout. So it's just great. We thanked Becca for sponsoring that. And I also went to the MAAB Legislative Breakfast today with my board members and the superintendent. And we met some of the newly elected officials in Annapolis. And they spoke on their views on certain issues. And it was a, we've had a very long day, but it was a very prosperous day. It was very good, and we're getting the job done, so thank you so much.
I've done a lot, but I understand it's sleeting outside, so I think if you'll excuse me, I'm just going to give you the highlights of one thing that I've done. The, we were here for the redistricting hearing, public hearing on proposed redistricting in order to fill the Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School and sort of the domino effect that that has. And I'd like to thank all the people who were interested enough and took the time to come out and either listen or to speak. And I think it is a testament to the inclusive process that we have undertaken over the last number of redistricting processes, where we bring interested parties in so that we have equal numbers of staff and community members, and that we make sure that all of the schools who are going to be affected, or potentially will be affected, that they have a seat at the table to have that discussion. And I'm also pleased because the process, it's an open process, anyone can come and listen to those meetings. And at the end, Mr. Clements and Ms. Joy, who is the co-chair from the County Council of PTAs, they take the time to ask if anyone in the audience has any questions or any concerns. They take those, and then at the very next meeting, those are some of the first things that they address as they move on. And I think the fact that it is an inclusive process, it is one that actively demonstrates the caring and thoughtful way that we go about this, that we have been fortunate enough that we understand we're never going to please everyone who's out there. But we do want people to understand that we are listening to their concerns, that we're hearing them, even if we can't address every one of them. And the fact that there were just three speakers, one of whom was the school liaison officer representing Pax River, was one of the three speakers, I think really spoke volumes about the fact that we have a very effective process. And when I have conversations with board members across the state and talk about how redistrictings happen here as compared to perhaps how they happen in other places, people always marvel that we are able to move forward in the way that we do, and that it is not a contentious process, it is one that is very inclusive. So I just want to say thank you, because it's not a quick process, there's a great deal of research that goes into it, a great deal of thought, and many permutations. But it is, it is one that is thought out with a vision toward making sure that these are lasting changes that take into account things that we know may or may not be on the horizon, so that we are moving people as few times as possible. So thanks to all who attended those meetings, who participated, and who brought the final product to us. Thank you very much.
Final word, thank you. Excuse me. I ended last week doing a classroom observation at George Washington Carver in a kindergarten classroom with Courtney Meyer. And it was a fantastic classroom, the kids were very active and engaged. One thing I want to bring forward is, Ms. Meyer had taken all of the books that the children have available for them and put them on laminated cards with a QR code. So the, these children, these five-year-old children would go over and pick up their iPads, and Otter Boxes, very durable, walk over and they would, they knew to scan the QR code, which took them right to the ebook library that George Washington Carver has. And they were reading all of their books, and some kids were having the books read to them. But the integration, the level of technology, the way in which children interact with that as though there's no thought, you know, we would walk over and pick up a book. If I tried to explain to many people, you know, so they grabbed this, now what, the QR code, which is hyperlink to the, wow, but these kids, it's seamless. And what a wonderful way to see kindergarten, starting at George Washington Carver. I did have the pleasure of spending a great deal of time with the board over the last several weeks, and they have been, they have been, they really have been great events. And the Spring Ridge Middle School Rhythm Club, Bonnie Bevan, I mean, they really, they just do us so proud. And she's got such a lovely relationship with those kids. The Becca Scholarship is just amazing. I attended with a senior who, his head was fairly spinning at the end of it, which is what happens when you gather that much information. And it's, we really are working with our children so that they see themselves today, and they're able to see themselves tomorrow and see the resources that are available to them. So that really was fantastic. I went to the Board of Public Works Appeal Meeting in Annapolis before going to Annapolis today, so I got to go to Annapolis two times in one week, blessed man, to appeal to the new governor, Governor Hogan, the $2.2 million that we, that's still outstanding, to complete the Spring Ridge Capital Improvement Plan on track and to cover cash flow. If you haven't ever gone to Annapolis and stood in front of the governor, and the comptroller, and the treasurer, and the flanking of all these other people, you don't really, and the Secret Service, it is a, you take a deep breath, it's a little, it can be a little daunting. I was very fortunate to have Mr. Clements right next to me, bolstering me, and then Delegate Ray came from her office to stand by me as I made the request to talk about how fantastic the school system is, specifically Spring Ridge Middle School and the STEM program that her daughter attends. So she spoke very highly of the mother county, recognized by Governor Hogan, as we are the mother county. So fingers crossed, $2.2 million, that's all we're asking for in CIP. So money, money, money. The last thing I want to do is I want to give a shout out to the cluster that we have in the audience today. We don't have much on the agenda this evening, so it will be blessedly short, and hopefully not sleety and slippery as you depart. We're going to be talking about graduation rate. We're going to be talking about the on-time graduation rate. And so I did ask each one of the secondary principals, and I realize the middle school principals build on the work from the elementary principals, and that kindergarten teacher is laying a foundation, Mr. Hyble, at George Washington Carver. Just wait till you see these kids in 12 years, they're going to be, they're going to be running the joint. But tonight, perhaps a moment and a pause, just to really recognize our secondary people, our high school people. So I asked each one of the high school principals to be in attendance tonight, and so thank you all for attending. But I also ask you to bring with you in tow a counselor and a teacher. Because as we, as we put out praise for these fantastic numbers, that we'll talk about in just a bit, it is, it's not something that the board does, or that I do, or even it's something that central office does. It's something that the adults in the schools do every single day. So I want to recognize the counselors who carry around the hearts of those kids, and they get them from crisis to crisis, and they push them back into the game all the time. And the teachers who relentlessly support these kids when they don't want to be supported, when they're actively seeking failure, you will push them back in. And the principals who sometimes need to wrap arms around everybody to move us forward. So if I, when I call your name, I ask that you would stand, please, so we can recognize the little team, the representative team representing the hundreds of people at each one of these schools. But from Chopticon High School, Mr. Garth Bowling Principal. And he is joined by Meg Woluski, Counselor. And Ms. Stephanie Franklin, Teacher. Lovely to have you here. From Great Mills High School, Mr. Jake Hyble, Principal. Ms. Audra Bishop, Counselor. Ms. Beth Dyson, Teacher. From Lenartown High School, Ms. Maureen Montgomery, Principal. Ms. Sue Taylor, Counselor. And Ms. Giselle Schrader, Teacher. We also have far in the back, Mr. Michael Egan, Principal at Tech Center. And we'll be talking a little bit about and recognize Fairlead Academy One, Ms. Becky Klein. Academic Dean, Ms. Sarah Cooper, Counselor. Ms. Nicole Fisher, Teacher. And from Fairlead Two, Wendy Zimmerman, Academic Dean. Amanda Noble, Counselor. And Mr. Stephen Westgate, Teacher. And I think we have Mr. Pike as well, correct? Mr. Pike as well. Never let us leave out English. So we're going to be talking a little bit about some fantastic numbers, and I just thank you very much for coming out. And I'm hopeful that we'll be able to draw at least one of you to the podium to say a couple of words a little later. And with that, I conclude my remarks for the moment. Mrs. Bailey?
Alright, well, I will just turn it right back over to you for the recognition portion.
Well, I believe that would be Dr. Western to start us off.
Good evening, Ms. Bailey, members of the board, and Mr. Smith. I would like to ask Ms. Sarah Wiesner and Ms. Amy Wagman to please come forward. The National Board of Professional Teaching Standards is recognized as the source for the highest standards and practices that lead to improved teaching, leading, and learning. This voluntary assessment program is designed to develop, retain, and recognize accomplished teachers, and to embed ongoing school improvement in our schools nationwide. The National Board Certification Process that Ms. Wiesner and Ms. Wagman completed in 2014 was a year-long series of performance-based assessments. The process included completing a portfolio, providing student work samples and videotapes of teaching practices, and conducting a thorough analysis of and reflection on their classroom teaching and their impact on student learning. Additionally, they were assessed on their knowledge of the content areas they teach. While state teacher credentialing programs set the basic requirements to teach in each state, National Board Certified Teachers demonstrate advanced teaching knowledge, skills, and practices. Completion of the National Board Certification Process signifies that teachers have developed and demonstrated the skills required of an accomplished education professional. This process of assessment can take from one to three years to complete. St. Mary's County Public Schools is proud to announce that both Ms. Wiesner and Ms. Wagman achieved National Board Certification in their first year of candidacy. These outstanding educators are now part of Maryland's cadre of 2,760 National Board Certified Teachers, as well as St. Mary's County's currently 40 certified National Board Teachers. To date, more than 110,000 teachers in all 50 states in the District of Columbia have achieved National Board Certification. And Maryland ranked ninth in the nation in 2014 for the number of teachers achieving this certification. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Smith to come forward to recognize each of our outstanding teachers. Sarah Wiesner is an English Language Arts Teacher. Ms. Wiesner has been a teacher with St. Mary's County Public Schools since 2007, and has eight years of experience with our school system. Ms. Wiesner earned her National Board Certification in the area of English Language Arts for early adolescents. Congratulations. Amy Wagman is an English Language Arts Teacher. Ms. Wagman has been a teacher with St. Mary's County Public Schools since 2007 as well, and also has eight years of experience with our school system. Ms. Wagman earned her National Board Certification in the area of English Language Arts for adolescents and young adulthood. Congratulations. Ms. Wiesner and Ms. Wagman would like to thank all of their National Board Certified Teacher mentors, especially Ms. Colleen Gill and Ms. Crystal Brookins, their colleagues who supported them, their students, and their families. We would also like to thank Ms. Jane Schaefer in Human Resources for her assistance with preparing tonight's recognition. This evening, I'm very pleased that the St. Mary's County Board of Education is recognizing our outstanding teachers for achieving National Board Certification. Congratulations again.
Two English teachers, secondary, fantastic. You have an opportunity to say a few words, I'd really like to hear from, I'd really, English teachers that, come on.
I don't really have much to say. Those of you that know me know I'm a woman of few words, but this was actually a really great process. Colleen Gill got me into it, and at the beginning, I mean, Sarah and I both had no idea what we were getting ourselves into, really. We, looking through the entire process, it was just very, very difficult at first, but once we sort of got the hang of it, it was okay. So I don't know, I just, I'm really kind of very supportive. Maureen Montgomery, my fantastic principal, supported me the entire time. And being at Lenartown High School is just a really great experience. I started at Margaret Brent with Mr. Egan, Mike Egan, so I just kind of, I've always had a fantastic experience teaching at St. Mary's County Public Schools, the first job I had. I've been here for eight years, and I really don't plan to go anywhere. So I think it's a fantastic school system to teach in, and I'm really happy that I had this opportunity.
Those of you that know me know I do talk a lot. I would echo a lot of the things that Amy said. I think for me, doing this process was very different, because I'm out of the classroom. So I really have to thank the teachers that I work with, they let me in their classroom. Jim Brochius, who moved back to Pennsylvania, Susanna Boyd, and Leanne Lasota let me in and borrow classes, and I worked with her students. So that was very neat for me. Throughout this process, I realized that at each school I've been in, I started at Lenartown Middle School, then I went to Great Mills High School, then I was at Margaret Brent, which is where I'm at now, has presented a different group of students, and different challenges and different experiences, and I'm very blessed to have had them. And I feel very lucky to have gone through this process and been able to reflect on teaching, and how the students have grown. Because I don't have my own classroom, I was able to reach back to students who I taught three years ago, and parents, and it was very nice to hear what they had to say and what they remembered from their freshman English class. So that has meant a lot to me.
I think, can we?
We are taking a short break.
Take a short break so we can take some pictures, all family, so we're going to, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, thank you.
That is what's on the connect, what's on here.
Okay.
Alright. I need a bank account.
With the Great Mills High School.
I remember your, yeah, I remember.
Talk about money again. We have a couple of things ahead of time. Alright, first of all, we have two items on the public hearing agenda. First is any comment on the 2015, 2016 school operating calendars?
No one signed up.
Okay. Our next item is on the High School Program of Studies.
No one signed up.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on. Public comment.
No one signed up.
Okay. You guys are just rolling through. Hold on, one more. Alright, the consent agenda. I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Action items, we have none. Now, Mr. Smith, you have two options. Talk about the budget or the graduation rate.
One or the other.
One or the other, they're both on the agenda.
Let's, let's start with, let's not start with this. That is totally not the right thing, we don't want to start with that. Let's start with this. And after we're done with this, we'll see if anybody wants to stay for the budget.
For the ice.
You can stay for the budget, though, if you want. Well, thank you very much, Mrs. Bailey, for the opportunity to bring forward to the Board of Education for information the four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate for the class of 2014. This is data that was embargoed until just this week, on January 27th. It was released by MSDE. At that point, the mdreportcard.org site went up, and we could go and take a look at all of our data and compare our data to our neighbors. This data, the four-year adjusted cohort graduation rate, it is the data point that determines how successful we are truly with children. It is a, it is an indisputable fact. It starts with the child who enters in 2011, and that ends with that same child graduating in 2014. It is student A to student A, and as people enter or leave, the numerator and denominator are adjusted accordingly. The first year that we calculated the four-year adjusted cohort rate, we had quite a gasp. Because up to this point, we had been using a lever rate, which took numbers upon numbers, and could be adjusted a bit. The four-year adjusted cohort rate cannot be adjusted, it is an absolute fact. So I'm glad that I'm joined with all of the friends from schools, and the hard work that they have done. Because this year, well, really last year, the class of 2014 posted an on-time graduation rate of 93.46 percent. Round of applause here. Absolutely. Last year, 91.5. We popped champagne, we wore buttons, I made posters, we celebrated. And in the back of my mind, I was like, oh, God, that's a high number. That's a really high number. Will we be able to beat that number? And we went through the entire year, and no kids dropped out of school. Everybody stayed in. Now, they weren't on track. They required an immense amount of effort throughout the entire year, and that's why we have teachers. And that's why we have counselors. And that's why we have administrators in attendance tonight. Because 85% of almost all students, for the most part, will enter school, work their way, do the right thing, and walk across the stage. their way, do the right thing, and walk across the stage. Every single percent after that comes only through the direct relentless intervention of professionals and also the cooperative work with, with the parents. So, the first year we calculated, it was 82.76. Last year, 2014, 93.46. It is, we've gone up over 10 percent in five years, and most importantly, we started just slightly ahead of the state of Maryland, Maryland number one in the United States for educational program. We outpaced the entire state by 7 percent, and that is really something to be proud of, and we are proud of it, and I hope that every one of you are very proud of that. More importantly, when we take a look at the same data, according to the, our African-American students, the first year we calculated in 2010, we were behind the state average. It's 72 percent of our African-American students graduating in four years, behind the state average of 74. And the second year, we were slightly behind again, we'd gone up to 75. The third year, we slightly got above the state of Maryland at 77, well, the state of Maryland was 76. Last year, we praised ourselves and felt really great, about 85 percent, outpacing the state of Maryland at 78 percent. Those are enviable numbers. But really, truly, through the persistence and through the work and through all of the effort of not only people within the school, but also community, also after-school activities, also mentoring, we posted a 90.43 graduation rate for African-American students in the state of Maryland, in the county of St. Mary's. This also is worthy of clapping. A 17 percent increase over five years and almost 10 percent above the state average. So, we are really proud of, of that and really proud of our schools. In fact, how did our schools do? From 2010 until 2014, Chopticon saw a 5 percent increase, 91 percent on-time graduation rate. Leonardtown High School started out at 88 and finished out at 96, an 8 percent increase. Great Mills slowed us started to 75 percent, languished a little, popped up a little, 92.23 percent. That is worth some clapping. And then overall, the entire county. I mean, that's just, that's just, that slide says it all. Furthermore, when we take a look at African-American achievement at each one of our schools, keep in mind that Leonardtown High School and Chopticon High School, we're talking about a population of about 30 to 40 students, so it's a little bit volatile, that's where you see it from place to place. When you get to Great Mills, well over 100 students, starting at 67 percent the first year we calculated it, finishing at 91.95 last year. That's a 24 percent increase over five years. That is really worth clapping about. Unbelievable achievement. At Great Mills High School, you are more likely to graduate on time with your peers if you are African-American than if you are a white student. That really says something about the staff at the school. That really does. Now, with that, I'd like to pause for a moment and step away from the podium and actually hear from somebody who's doing the work, and I asked, Mr. Jake Hyble, if you could come up and take my place.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Good evening, board members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of really all of St. Mary's County Public Schools and the success we've, you know, these numbers indicate. Spending a little bit of time talking about Great Mills High School, it's important to reflect upon what these numbers mean. They're more than just numbers. They do represent a total team effort. They represent kids, and I think it's important to, to know the story and know where we come from. You know, and in talking about Great Mills High School, I'm going to mention some things that I know is going on at all the other high schools, from the counselors and the teachers and their dedicated staff. You don't post these kind of numbers without really working hard in that as a team. But who are we at Great Mills High School? Give you a little background, we are the oldest high school in the county. We have generations of families that have come through our, our doors, and we're very proud of that. I think that makes us unique in several ways. We do have the largest minority high school in the county. We're close to 50 percent minority. We have the largest farm group of students, around over 40 percent. Make no bones about it, we face challenges, our kids face challenges, they come to school facing challenges. This success didn't happen overnight. This has been years in the making. It started with, and I have to give a shout out because I'd like to have dinner tonight, and that would be. Started with my wife, Tracy Hyble, who's back here with my daughter Lauren. Tracy, stand up. I've heard the jokes about following in her footsteps, so I'm still trying to fit into those shoes. But this work didn't start overnight. It's been years in the making, and it starts in the classroom with our teachers, our dedicated staff. With us tonight is Beth Dyson, our Teacher of the Year, one of the best human beings and greatest teachers that I've ever known, works phenomenal with our kids, bridge projects, helping them meet their graduation requirements, and also touring in English and social studies and anything else that needs to be done. Beth, we certainly appreciate, and she's representing our, our staff. Our teachers are phenomenal. They are dedicated. They work extremely hard, they know how to work with kids. They don't give up on kids. It is challenging from times, I make no bones about it. Our teachers' jobs at Great Mills is difficult from time to time, but nights like this, I, I hope that they take solace and know that it is rewarding and it is worth it. Other people to mention in the audience is Ms. Audra Bishop, our lead counselor at Great Mills, and Mr. Smith couldn't have said it any better, to, to counsel our students who come to us with all kinds of issues, and they wear many hats in our building. From ninth grade to 12th grade, the job that they do is phenomenal, and then it's, and we're in graduation season now, so they're meeting with me on a weekly, bi-weekly basis, and, and I'm getting impatient, so God bless them. They're doing a phenomenal job. Our success, too, goes to all the other partners in, in our staff, our community partners, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Fairlead 1, Fairlead 2, Ms. Rebecca Klein and Ms. Wendy Zimmerman and their staff. Taking our group of kids, many of our kids are on, they're on target entering high school to not graduate, and they're not giving up on them, they're giving them another alternative to graduation, and it's working. I mean, I, I can't thank them enough. I know I'll probably be having, I'll be owing someone dinner or something later with Rebecca Klein, but they're doing a phenomenal job, and I appreciate the board for supporting that program because without it, we wouldn't be posting these numbers today. Also have to mention Apex. You know, we brought in Apex, and that goes to Central Office and their support and the board's support. Apex has been an alternative for many of our kids who need that extra alternative. They need a tool and a toolbox, so to speak, and it is, and it's not necessarily easier, but it is, it is paving a path for kids alternatively, and that's not going away. That's the future of education in many ways, so we're really proud of that and thankful. I'm gonna go back to the teachers. The support we've received from Central Office, really, another supporter are the content supervisors, and what they have provided, providing quality instruction, helping our teachers, each and every become better teachers in the classroom. Providing that quality instruction for our kids is making a huge difference. I mentioned this was a team effort, and it is. It's, it's a team effort of dedicated staff, that's the same kind of work going on at Leonardtown and at Chopticon and in our school system. We have much to be proud of. We have more challenges ahead, make no bones about it. I say it all the time at Great Mills, we are what we are. It's never dull, and I love that. But one thing I'm proud to say about our staff at Great Mills is we never, never, and in St. Mary's County, we never give up on kids, and that means a lot. Because I say it all the time, Serina knows it, after all, we are Great Mills, and we're very proud of it. Thank you.
And, you know, we could have had all of the principals get up, and I, and I, and I thank you very much for, for coming, and, and I thank Mr. Hyble for stepping up and kind of representing them as well. They would have told similar stories. Last year, we reviewed all the different tools that we, that we put in, that we put in place to help our kids, to give them alternatives, to have different things that there, that are available to them. I thank Mr. Hyble for mentioning the content supervisors. Curriculum materials, observation of staff, mentoring of new teachers, these are incredibly important elements of a well-rounded and organized classroom, not to mention special education and all of the different interventions and supports that are related to that, even enrichment with some of our students. And then finally, student services, our PPWs who habitually go out and get our habitually true-in kids and bring them to school, our school psychologists who, who push in when we have great crisis. So, there are people that perhaps, that I'm, that I'm forgetting, I'm sure, but everybody in the school system needs to be very proud of this, of this data. So, I couldn't say it any better than Mr. Hyble. You know, how did we get here? We have teachers who never give up on kids, we have counselors who never give up on kids, we have administrators who never give up on kids, we have support staff that never give up on kids, we have community partners that never give up on kids, and then ultimately, we have parents who never give up on their own kids, and then most importantly, we have kids who never give up on themselves. So, I thank the board's opportunity to bring this fantastic data point before you and to spotlight the incredible work of incredible people with incredible kids. So, thank you.
Comments from the board?
Mr. Smith and I had the opportunity to go to the May Fall Conference and present on many of the programs that brought us to where we are. And the board member who asked us to come and do this presentation is from Montgomery County, and I'm happy to say that after we spoke and after he gave this wonderful presentation and alluded to the fact that though he couldn't talk about the numbers because they were not finalized, that he was quite certain that our numbers were going to underscore what we had shared about our success and our success for all. And so, this board member from Montgomery County is now going out, and as I like to say, she's preaching the gospel of St. Mary's County, because if we can do it, anybody can do it. It's, you've got to have the drive, you've got to have the determination, because I believe fully that we have the talent across the state, but I believe we also have the roadmap to get there. And I am so happy that we are able to go and talk about this because we have the experience and we have the results, and that's what's most important, we have those results. So, thank you to all of you, because this is just an incredible outcome, and, and I'm so pleased for you because the hard work that you've put in, and that is sometimes very difficult to say, am I getting through? But what parent hasn't said, am I getting through? And you, at some point, you hear your children give voice to something and you think, wow, that came from me. They, they did hear it, and now they're telling somebody else. So, you may not always be around to hear your students share your vision, your words, your teaching, but make no mistake, somewhere, somehow, it will come out, and they will look back to you. So, well done.
Thank you.
It's often been said it takes a village to raise a child, but it takes a village to educate a child. St. Mary's County Public School is a village, and we also rely on our community partners to help as well. I owe a huge congratulations to everybody, the teachers, the counselors, the PPW workers, the support staff, the community partners, the parents, and the kids who believe in themselves. Even when they think nobody else might, we do believe in them. Mr. Hyble, that's a phenomenal success at Great Mills High School. Wonderful for all students and especially for African-American students. You have decreased the achievement gap at your school substantially.
Well, he's actually reversed it.
Yeah, you did. So, that just shows you.
The graduation rate for African-American students exceeds the Caucasian students at his school.
That's what I thought you were saying, and that's wonderful, and, and I thank you. And Mr. Hyble, where those Great Mills High School colors everywhere he goes, 24/7, no matter where, you're seeing, he's wearing those colors, and he's saying, we are, and the students know, Great Mills. So, thank you for all your hard work and dedication to the students. I want to thank Ms. Mrs. Montgomery for all the hard work that she does. Mr.
Mr. Bowling.
Bowling, Mr. Bowling right there on the battleground, too, doing a wonderful job at Chopticon. Mrs. Wendy Zimmerman at Fairlead 1, Fairlead 2. Thank you so much for all you.
Ms. Klein.
Mrs. Klein, thank you. It's everybody. Who else did I miss?
Mr. Egan way in the back, don't forget.
Mr. Egan, is he hiding?
Don't forget, essentially, the.
All the middle school principals, elementary, preschool, head start, everybody who made this a success, and I'm very grateful and thankful. Now, other systems are comparing themselves to St. Mary's County Public Schools. It was a time when people were saying, why isn't St. Mary's County Public Schools like this county or that county? Those counties now are looking at St. Mary's County Public Schools. This is, St. Mary's County Public Schools is a well-kept secret, but that secret is out. It's a great place to live, raise your family, it's a wonderful place, and I chose St. Mary's County 30 years ago. Of all the places in the world, I could have chosen, St. Mary's County is the place, and it's getting better and better every day. We have one of the best school systems in the nation, and I would always say, in the world, in the universe. So, thanks to everyone who's helped, I'm just very grateful and very pleased, and we need to celebrate.
Absolutely.
We need to celebrate our successes. Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
It has always been said that every student has that one child in their school career that makes a difference, and clearly, we have that. Our children in our schools have multiple teachers that make a difference, and multiple counselors, and multiple administrators. I hope that they can look back on their school careers once they graduate and not just point to one specific person, but clearly, with all the work that, that you guys are doing across the county in these secondary and elementary schools, there are multiple points where you are touching and helping our children achieve their greatness, and my hats are off to you. So, I think it's, it's fabulous. No one can possibly imagine the amount of hard work that you put into each and every child every day. So, thank you.
I wanted to also thank you. It's an entire staff effort and community effort, but it starts from the top, from you all. You know, it doesn't matter who that person is, whether it's the, you know, the coach or the building service worker or the teacher that might say just that, just one thing to spark an interest in a student or a child, to help them make it through. So, definitely, everyone, it's a team effort, and also a personal thanks, because I do know some of the, the extra effort that goes on, Mr. Hyble and Ms. Montgomery. I know that Ms. Montgomery has actually gotten in the car. Don't want to embarrass my son, but to actually, to go out to go get my son for school, and Mr. Hyble having those heart-to-heart talks, you know, to make sure that my son graduated. So, personal thanks.
Mr. Crosby?
My goodness, hasn't it all been said? Anyway, all three of my children, it shows my age, but I am getting old, went to, hard to say, but true, went to Town Creek, then they went to Esperanza, then they went to Great Mills. I think a good school helps every child find out what their talent is and helps them develop it no matter what their IQ is or what their IQ isn't. And that's, I say that's the way to go, because not all of us are geniuses, present company excluded, I guess. Anyway, Mrs. Hyble, Mr. Hyble, and Angie, which is my son's wife, you have done a wonderful job, all of you have done a wonderful job, and I'm so glad we moved here and stayed here. And, Mr. Smith, you are in the process of doing a wonderful, wonderful job.
I'm always in the process. I'm acting, I'm in, or I'm in the process.
What do you do? What, what do you do once you've made it?
I hope I'm never finished. May I, may I never be finished? May I never be finished?
But thank you very much.
I'd just like to talk a little bit about the support that everyone has been mentioning. Support with students. Support with students has to come from everyone and for every student, and I just think that's so important with teachers, with educators, with administrators. My personal experience, when I was interested in running for student member, this position, I went to Mr. Hyboll's office, and I was like, Mr. Hyboll, I think I want to run for this. And he was like, you are doing this, right? And I'm like, I think so. And he's like, you are. So, that support really gave me the confidence to run for this position. And teachers, educators can impact students' lives in even ways that their own parents don't. So, I'd just like to, again, thank all the educators. Thank you.
So, just before we conclude, we are third in the state. All right, 94 points, we are third. We are behind Queen Anne County and Calvert. And we're only a half a percent behind Calvert. I'm not saying that we're going to be counting up to figure out exactly, but you know, first in the state really has a ring to it.
I think Ms. Klein is already making plans.
Yes, Rebecca is always making plans.
You're on tape, so we got it recorded.
Oh, that's right, we're on YouTube.
I just thank you for the opportunity. I thank you all for your hard work. Please go back and thank individually every single person that's involved, and also use this as motivation, because second marking period report cards just came out, and if they're anything like, well, the second marking period grades, and you all know there's much work to be done for the class of 2015, to make sure the class of 2015 follows 14. Thank you very much. We are going to go into budget, but if you guys all just got up and snuck out, that's probably not going to be a terrible thing if you had to. But we are going to talk about.
But you can stay.
But you can certainly stay.
I'm not, no, not sleeping out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody likes to be there for the recognition of the art and the reading language arts teachers and the great graduation. Budget, budget drives everything. Well, thank you very much, Ms. Bailey. What I'm going to do is just simply say, we have been making great progress. We have presented a budget, we have posted it on the St. Mary's County Public Schools' website under the Superintendent tab, down to Budget. There you'll find the presentation as well as the executive summary, as well as a hyperlink to the video of the work session, the work session where we went through in detail all elements of that. We haven't modified anything to date. We have had many very productive conversations with our county commissioners. I remain ever hopeful that we're going to have an opportunity to speak even further in the next month, and that ultimately, we get to the point where we say our public schools are fully funded by our local county commissioners. That being said, I would certainly like to hand it off to Ms. Tammy McCourt and have her answer any questions you may have. Ms. McCourt?
Well, that certainly is a hard presentation to follow. Nothing more effectively clear as a board move than to say that you're going to talk about budget. So, by all means, we've spent a lot of time over your last two meetings talking about the budget. I'm sure that you've spoken to community members, and I just ask at this time, do you have any additional questions? Are there any additional areas that you would like us to elaborate on?
Well, honestly, with the governor's budget coming out and the decrease in funding that has been targeted for St. Mary's County.
A drop of about 1.7 million dollars. So, how has that been addressed in this budget?
So, we have just now received a copy of the fiscal briefing put out by the Department of Legislative Services, quite a thick document, as you can see. I'm still in the process of certainly analyzing it all. There've been a lot of numbers that have been tossed around out there. The governor's budget came out about a week ago now, and it reflected about a 1.7 million dollar reduction in some places, and in other documents, it reflects a 1.5 million dollar reduction. And what that number reflects is the change as compared to what was intended per COMAR Section 5-202. And in COMAR, it talks about inflationary increases, and within COMAR, Section 5-202, it talks about increasing the foundation and transportation allocation, special educational allocations by the Consumer Price Index or the implicit rate increase. We did not factor either of those into your budget revenues. The rationale for that is because historically, the governor's budget has not always followed exactly what was already in law. It has come out as a change. So, we wanted to be fiscally prudent and put together a budget that reflected the existing PPA allocation from the state, however, increased or reflected an increase in student population.
It looked like the GCEI, the Geographic Cost of Education Index, would be dropped off, that there would be a change to the net taxable income, and the inflation factor would not be phased in as quickly as they had originally expected.
That's correct. Statewide, the GCEI is an allocation currently of 132 million dollars, and it was dropped to 67 million dollars. For St. Mary's County, we are not as heavily reliant on GCEI as many of the other jurisdictions. In the current year's budget, there is 231,000 dollars, and we're looking about, receiving about half of that going into next fiscal year at this time.
What's interesting for me about GCEI is that there are only about half the school systems in the state that receive it, but of those half of the school systems of the 24, they educate about 80 percent of the students across the state. So, that funding goes a long way. But I appreciate that you presented this as a fiscally conservative budget, as you've said in the past, so that rather than having to cut 1.7 million dollars from this, we never counted on it in the first place.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. And then my only other question is, you've talked about the funding we have and what your expectation is to do with it. Are we cutting any programs? Are we able to move through with what we have currently? Will there be changes to what we're doing currently?
Thank you. Assuming full funding from our county commissioners of 7.5 million dollars over maintenance of effort or 7.1 million dollars over what they have allocated last year to this year, we would not have to cut any programs. The only, the only thing that is not included is originally, we had had a dance teacher for the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts for the cohort as it rose. We had anticipated adding a dance teacher to the 2015-16 budget. We have not done that. Instead, we're going to go back and modify the curriculum within the program to work with the current staff that they have at the school and the academic programs that have been, have already been approved. Everything else moves forward, and to clarify, the opening of Duke Elementary School, there are three positions that are in this year's budget. There are 27 positions in next year's budget, ranging from food service, building manager, paraeducators. These are all positions that currently do not exist within the St. Mary's County Public School system, so we will have to be adding them for next year. The teacher, regular education teacher, kindergarten through grade five, we will be taking those positions from other places throughout the school system. That is how we are saving the 1.3 million dollars originally proposed for the 3.3 to open Duke. So, that means that some of them will come out of elementary school, perhaps some of them will come out of middle school, some of them may come out of high school, some of them will come out of positions frozen or reduced from supporting services, frozen or reduced from mid-level administration, from central office. So, the way we are having this budget work is we are taking our existing staff and moving them about. One of the things you will notice is we are not talking about getting rid of all the instructional resource teachers. We are not talking about removing the paraeducators from elementary or from kindergarten classrooms. We are not talking about taking our non-tenured teachers and sending them a letter that says they may not be renewed. Everybody who currently has a position with St. Mary's County Public Schools would have a position next year. Any movement would be done through attrition.
When you consider that the majority of the students who will populate that school are already in our system, already being taught, just as the teachers, just as the students move, the teachers, there will be teachers who move as well.
Yes.
So, that's all I had to ask.
Mr. Smith, you answered all my questions.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions.
Very good. You're moving them around, and it should balance out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No questions, thank you.
So, my final question to you is, we'll have the public hearing next week. Are there any changes that you would like us to incorporate in this document?
I have been through everything. I have been through the detail. As I said before from the very beginning, I think it's a solid budget. I don't think, I mean, you guys have done a phenomenal job. It is very fiscally prudent, you know, loving the healthcare reserve, still, still happy about that. So, I, you know, I don't see, I don't foresee any changes coming from my part.
No? No.
We look forward to the hearing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have two quick announcements. First, the public budget hearing is going to be on Wednesday, February 4th at 6:00. And then the next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Wednesday, February 11th at 9:00 a.m. So, if I can have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
You are hired.